Six thirty, I'm calling this meeting to the City Council to open. We do have a form present. At this time. Mr. Rob Fleming is going to lead some pledges to the Texas American flags and after that he remains standing. After. Chris Copeland from Tru Life Church is going to be bringing our indication.
Lord Jesus, we thank you for your goodness and for your mercy. We thank you for our community and each city leader, each elected and appointed official. We pray tonight God that you would have your divine will in this meeting. That every conversation these meetings was called, that every decision aligns with your perfect will. In Jesus' name we pray.
We did, it still did it.
Where's this thing?
I don't know, it wasn't doing it the other day at Pennsyl. So I think someone's hitting it, your son, it's too. Not only yourself, it might be two months too.
You're gonna hear more about finances here in a few minutes than you probably care to, so I will be brief. Um, we are almost eleven percent of. Over projections for sales tax, a little bit on that property tax, we've collected. Eighty-four percent of property tax, sixty-seven of sales tax, I'm sorry, forty-six of sales tax. Didn't have any real significant expenditures. Um, we do have engine one, our, the primary engine is, uh, remains in the shop. We were getting that paid on it today. Those costs continue to increase, but so far it's, we can cover them in the budget. Not really that much to report. Everything's moving, we're in pretty good shape. I'll take any questions that you have, but. Questions, it's kind of a boring month.
Okay, on then. Item number two, discussion on possible limits to the God for city personnel policy.
So we are recommending changes to the implement weather and emergency clothing policy, the longevity pay and service recognition policy, the holiday leave policy and the vacation policy. There's a lot of formatting changes on redline, probably a lot of movement. So it's more formatting than it is adding garbage. The major changes on the implement weather policy are going to be uh, providing a benefit to the employees who work. So those services like the park scrubs or public works groups that come in, work during the implement weather, they would get the day off on another day. That will not include the uh, police empire. Those are gonna still, it's their regular part of their duty. But we'll be able to use it on another day for any animal control involved in parks, public lifts. For the longevity pay and service recognition, we sit away with key um, year minimum. So we no longer required employee be uh, employee for a year before getting longevity pay. They're able to get that um, as soon as they earn one month of service. Still paid out in November, one time a year only, but they'll be getting earning it, begin earning it after one. Um, we also removed the maximum for the longevity pay. Um, I believe it was twelve hundred. There's no longer, no more that an employee's been with us over thirty years, they'll be paid for months of service of thirty. Uh, there's no amount identified in the policy and that's so that I don't think it might be out of that budget every year. And if there is a change, we won't have to change that of the policy. It just will fall below the four hundred. Um, holiday renew, we identified the number of hours associated with holidays. So different departments in the city were varying schedules. Some people are working eight hours, nine hours, twelve hours, four hours. So we're just going to unify how we're charging those hours for uh, general government and police, it'll be eight hours per holiday, for fire, it'll be twelve. Also gonna go ahead and preload the holiday hours for police and fire, so that they have a base to use throughout the year. And then I was trying to get into some weather. Uh, on the vacation leave policy, um there's really not any major changes to that, except for the sellback allowance. Right now we allow uh, forty hours sellback. We're increasing that to eighty hours, but we did leave that stipulation of the forty hour movement, same week. Yes, sir.
If you say after one month, a person can get long duty pay, is there a probationary period for new employees?
We do have a six month probationary period and that will still stand.
So if they don't make probation, then they've been drawing money for six months?
We're only paying it out in November. So if they leave before November, then they wouldn't get the check. But if they leave after November, then.
So if they're, they go to work in November, December they're getting long duty pay and then the next month they get fired because they didn't make the probation, they still get the month.
It would be, no, it would be if they worked in October. Well, technically if they worked in September. So if they have one full month prior to the check payment cut in November, they will get twelve. Right now our longevity pays twelve.
Johnny, the reason behind that was, since longevity is based on monthly service. Prior to, we didn't, we didn't pay anything for less than twelve month service. But we had a lot of new people that were at eight, ten months, um. Things were doing well, so we, we switched it this past year to see how it worked out and that way everybody gets credit for the month. But if they're not here in November to receive it, they don't get it.
That was just strange to me that probationary employee is not, didn't used to be considered a full time employee until they got off probation.
We still, we still have the twelve month probation, but we also let them approve. They've approved vacation sick time too. They can't use it for a certain period of time. And that would be the case here, I mean, they would have to last well, at least through September to get it, because it's paid out during Thanksgiving.
I do have a question about the uh, maximum. Uh, we had a twelve hundred dollar maximum. I see no problem with, you know, looking and making an increase of that. But I don't know that we want to stab it and open it in. I mean, you're you're, you're looking at, that's might be your twenty, thirty years or we're hitting that really big bump for doing. I don't know that that's something that I'm well excited about, which, but.
I disagree. If we got somebody that's taken what it's twenty or thirty years, he wouldn't dare anybody.
But we have a recognition that we're putting in there for people at those levels, don't.
We do have, at five year increments, we have service awards. It would, well, depending on, you know, the the, the amount of longevity pay is established, these tier by the council and budget. State law requires firefighter to get a minimum of four dollars, so that's just what we've said is the base. Last year it paid out at twelve, years before it's been ten, we've had it at six, it fluctuates, so it y'all have the final say each budget year, what that amount can be. But you, I mean, y'all also have to approve this too, so if there's something that y'all aren't comfortable with, then we can certainly take another stab at it and bring something back.
But I, I'm just, you know, I know we had an established maximum one time. And, and there was reasoning behind that. I'm just wondering if anybody else was kind of wondering whether that was a good idea to take the maximum completely out or yeah, twelve hundred dollars.
I don't think, I don't think we had any. Twelve hundred did max out at ten years.
Then four dollars.
Well, no, I'm saying if you, if you leave the current longevity pay at twelve dollars an hour, if you take twelve hundred and buy it by twelve, isn't that?
It's four hours a month.
It's twelve, that's what it was last year.
Well, the min, the.
The minimum would be four.
Great resources to stay in the city, I mean, if they have not had performance issues or any things, they're lying.
I'll tell you, this, this is a big deal to a lot of employees, because it quite frankly, it makes or breaks Christmas for a lot of them. And it's yeah, people ask about it. Well, we max out, you know, pay, pay rates, you know, those max out, and so this is a way for a long term employee that could continue to see a little extra money for us, for the time.
I associate it with institution. Because like Shelley said, you know, when places would have been fifty dollars, they can go oh, maybe make more money, maybe not, but when they have the deciding factor in the back of their head, I'm going to get a pretty decent couple. Yeah, that's the check. I, I don't know the actuality, who would make that big of a business, but it would certainly make them fit. It's something, because the longer they're here, the more of the value they are, like you said, if they're not. It's an investment the city makes into personnel.
Sure.
They leave for something else, there they cost in her taste. We value our staff, we want that to be put in this kind of.
It's on for action tonight. We can bring it back if you, if something you don't like, but it's on for, we just wanted to go over it now. But it's on for tonight. Anything else?
We've had a few little bit cuts with software, um. The transition itself was new, but I guess we found with the software that we have here, some type of fail saves where we didn't put the billing out last certain day, it bottomed with it out. And so we were not aware that that feature even existed in there. I'm not so sure that any, from fund review or any number that was in there, that we were pretty proactive, we were talking to fund viewers, like hey, this is gonna be our last billing. And so um, the, the first billing ended up accidentally pushing it out and it took on probably two or three weeks to pull that data back. And then this last month, somehow or another it happened again and they promised us that it will not happen. So uh, instantly, but this um Angela, that she gets saved, it generates the billing of this digitally and Angela has to approve it before it goes to printers and so we thought it, um. I guess I misunderstood, they don't send out email notices, but what was happening is that we're still continuing to collect on past dues or non payments. And so waste connections is also collecting monthly payments. So what was happening when we were having to do the credits, the credits were coming from people coming in, paying past due amounts and that bill was added for that month at seventeen eighty-four, but they were overpaying a month because it pushed it into the billing system. So now that we, they shut the payment system down immediately, so they couldn't make online payments until they could pull it back. But since it had happened previous, they, they had to create or build some type of program to pull back that, those bills. And so they were able to pull it back much quicker this time, but I do not believe that we had anybody's new online payments that paid over this time, that if we did, it should be very few, because they shut the payments. That's what I'm hoping for this time. They have officially apologized and they, and they even offered to be here tonight to explain that means.
But there weren't any autographs this time that we had left, no.
No, and to my understanding, there wasn't any autograph before it came from, um them going online. Was minded. But they were paying past due amounts, so in my staff report, I've mentioned that I think there's, she still has just around seven thousand dollars worth to collect and at some point I'd like to discuss, maybe writing off that remaining seven thousand because it is causing confusion, because people are still trying to pay, they're, they're still paying us for past dues, but also now they're paying this connection, so it is causing some confusion. We don't have this past due. How old they are, uh, I can see, I can get to the report.
Ones that I looked at are mostly rental properties. Several years old, people that we've just not been able to track down. This number was much higher. Angeles really hit a home run dragging in that, that, I mean, this is, I don't look for much of that to be recovered, so. Yeah, they've moved off and they're several years old and now they've just stayed in the system. Yeah, well, because most of the properties are, you know, fifteen or twenty dollars here or there, because we were doing this, a lot of this was back when it was quartered. So it, it, it would cost more to probably chase that down from those property owners even then, and statute of limitations may give us, because some of these things are several years old. I don't know that we could even go after the property. I think the best mess be done with it, turn it off and that'll stop all of this stuff from.
Is that, I think, um, we have pretty this, um, waste connection, three, about seven, the list of non payments. Done, there was uh, two hundred and forty something accounts that were on this last time that are, there's shopping service, so going back to kind of creating the confusion, now they've stopped service over here too, so they also owe money, but we're gonna because we can identify those accounts and see here quicker now. We will be, you know, per city ordinance, they're required to have back service, so at this point, we're gonna warn them in the citation, so I think I think we've reached the point where I think we're probably gonna collect as much as we we get, probably have collected as much as we have at this point on all the past dues, so now I'd like to focus on evening the new accounts for past due, you know, the sixteen days, that we have had to serve.
We get to the next month having a figure and everything, but just decided to write that off?
She's collected as of, uh, January twenty-three, twenty-seven thousand eight hundred and eighty-one, eight hundred and eighty dollars and then the amount outstanding as of the twenty eighth, that's every day, we, uh, seventy.
Do we need a special resolution to put that off or how do you?
I think just give direction, I mean, just tell us what happened out.
Yeah, you know, questions about the fact that? All right, moving on to number four, discussions about the IP infrastructure and moving along and.
We have them here, the reps from Total Verde are here and they will give you a quick update.
So uh, I want to give a quick one, I don't know how many people remember the discussion we talked about with uh, the fiber back going down Main Street connecting all the city for dark fiber. Running additional pairs for city to the over, some of those from other carriers were uh, connected to other businesses in the area. So we have been waiting to find out what the county was gonna do with the new data system, so there's a huge you know, we've been, we've been engaged with counties to help and negotiate that deal. Well, the only way that they can actually get to Burrows and offload the data is gonna come out of the job. Both to the E S D and then to the new dispatch center, Sheriff's Office building on, Patrick, Redback, yeah, Patrick. So um the, one of the things that I think we're now in position, ready, the city take a really hard look at this and we missed, you know, waiting on some of the stuff from the county. And miss having twelve figures, which we just got someone out of last night. So I think by next month we'd have, you know, everything you would need to make a decision, but we redesigned it into the, into the ballpark, uh, entrance. Comes down just, just south of the nine seventeen here, which is where they're gonna connect from the same fiber from Joshua I S D all the way to E S D and then from the new sheriff's, uh, now on dispatch. Uh, the county's gonna have to be able to uh, pull that data from the initial O S S I, which has only had police data from Burleson anyway. So we already have a couple of people that are wanting to jump on your fiber network with then would have to pay obviously monthly to be able to use. Well, it's two other carriers, so we have U P N and Windstream have already decided that they want to be a part of it as well. So until we have the exact numbers, like I said, I just got a lot of it, it was too late, but I want to give you guys an update. Where we built to or where they designed to build to. And then recouping costs can vary depending on the barriers, but we do know that there's no way that they can move that data. All the P D data, it's just, it's massive.
I have any questions?
So we need to bring you back next month.
Yeah, I will have the exact numbers. We have, we have roundabout numbers, I mean, it just, for instance, like when we discussed about it. You know, we were gonna build it out and then revise connectivity parts, Wi-Fi, citizens, all the stuff that you need for that rural broadband initiative. It was at like a million two nine, um, it's now down around, they are at eight, eight hundred. That has the cameras, that has the park Wi-Fi connectivity cameras, the fiber back, you know, the ring and then into each of the city facilities off of that ring with multiple. Yeah, and then the new city hall location is gonna be basically a stub or a pedestal until it's built, but that way it's pretty dead. We don't have to worry about building it later. Uh, and then down here, we're creating a larger splice on South Side. Everything coming from the county north is gonna hit uh, at the basically, I guess, the south side where Main Street cuts back.
And just for curiosity reasons, if these other companies get into the bundle, then what, what kind of monthly fees are we looking?
Most of the time, okay, so I can give you like from a county, just knowing what the county's got to pull from O S S I. We're looking between twenty-five hundred and three thousand dollars a month to use those two strands to connect to Burleson. The carriers would be various to how many people up and down, they want to sell their internet services to, right? Off of your fiber, so it prevents the carriers from having to board, cringe into every facility up and down between Main Street and seventy-four of this whole area. So it's gonna you know, I would say on an average, you're talking two to four hundred dollars per business, let's say, per month off of this.
I was having questions? Thank you very much.
Jeff, we're gonna make that stuff the way that it is.
Uh, on April twenty-second, the city had parked with Pastor Copeland and the ministerial alliance for Joshua United. Uh, it's a day in park with the music and food trucks and all kinds of stuff, kids, it's gonna be a great, great event, uh, by Mark Downer, hopefully you can enjoy.
You know, some of the, um, you know, the, the, that ends on the bicycles.
Uh, that's twenty-second as well, that'd be row ride or hero ride. It's on the twenty-seventh, that's when it and they're having, they're actually having breakfast at Tru Life.
We're cooking it, so be available.
And if I got anything else? Okay, public information, the county provides citizens to speak on any topic. However, on what the item is actually on, you cannot have a discussion about it. We can't point you forward proper staff to, we have any citizens sign up?
No, sir.
Okay. Uh, item G, the consent agenda, we have several items on here. If there's no anybody wants to object, we'll go ahead and do this as a one. Group? Okay, so I'm open to motion?
Indeed, approve it, consent agenda.
Motion to approve, but take away and Angela's second. Any discussion? Uh, I would like to, to point out on this uh, consent agenda, item number two. To discuss the super possible action, set this up an adaptation preventive from raw and have a tentative attorney William Martin. Colonel Horton uh, lost his life as a test pilot for armed forces. He was actually a civilian contractor, he died in service of our country. I am, I'm more than honored that he, he placed on, into our veterans memorial. And I, I, I am very happy that his family has taken the step and uh, we were discussing a little bit earlier, uh, we want to make sure that because of his sacrifice and everything, the memorial currently established, we make it very evident. This is somebody we all need, armed at all. Uh, we all have the, we wanted to sign up. So these are the apps that we have at this time and we're planning a more vague service.
Trying to get ones to come forward into the school or to be paid for.
So uh, please, innocent alone. So if there's no further discussion on that's the super possible action when they set me with this on, I am with all, just be gone.
Thank you, Mayor. We have the, uh, audicus from Snow Garrett Williams here to go over the report for you.
Senior Manager with Snow Garrett Williams. And you guys have a copy of our art report in front of you in the, um, bargaining folders there. I'm just gonna take a few minutes to hit the highlights, um, but please stop me if you have any questions and go over anything in more detail, but I'll not take too much of your time. And first off, we're gonna start on page thirty, so this is our opinion letter. And right at the top, it says, in our opinion, the financial statements present fairly the financial condition of the city of Joshua as of September thirtieth, twenty twenty-two, and the changes in that financial position for that same year ended. Importance with accounting principles generally accepted in the United States of the year. So this is that cleaner, unmodified opinion that you're listening. Uh, next we'll move to page six, so this is the management's discussion and analysis section. Um, it's a really good overview of the financial statements in more of a narrative format and it focuses on carrying business results to twenty twenty-two results to the twenty twenty-one results. Um, I'm not gonna go through all the details of that, but I'm just encouraging you guys through, for, for a really good overview of everything. And we'll move forward then to page sixteen, so that is our balance sheet. And as of September thirtieth, twenty twenty-two, the city ended the year with total assets of just under twelve point four million dollars. That was up about a million and a half from twenty twenty-one. Uh, most of that increase was each of the million dollars in the ARPA, um, federal refunding they all received right at the end of the year. And then we see total liabilities at the end of the year of two point five million. And that was an increase of about one point three million from the prior year and again, that's because of the way that we have to show the great revenue, so um, until you spend it, it's So um until you spend it, it's as a liability. So that money, that million dollars that we receive right at the end of the year hasn't been spent, so it's sitting in liabilities and goals. And then that um brings us to a total fund balance at the end of the year of about nine point seven million. Of that, about four million dollars is restricted for the TIF debt service and economic development with the E D C and the C D C. And then um about five point six of that is unrestricted. So in the general fund year, um unrestricted fund balance is about five point nine million dollars. So that's what's available to fund your future operations for the city. And next we'll move to page seventeen. So that's our statement of revenues expenditures and changes in fund balance. So it's the income statement for the city. And at the end of the year, um we will report total revenues uh just under nine million dollars. That was up quite a bit from the prior year and most of that is due to um increased property tax collections, just with the increased valuations we've seen all throughout this area. And then also the increased sales. And total expenditures at the end of the year were about nine point five million. Um, those were up a little bit from prior years, well, about one point six million dollars. Just from spending grant funds. Um, we guys added a few employees during the year auditing and then did some certain straight repairs. Um, so that gives us an operating loss actually of about five hundred and eighty nine thousand dollars. And that's before the um other financing sources and uses. So if we move down to that section, that's where we account for the proceeds in terms of assets and proceeds from new bonds that there. I guess a refunding bond and one other note payable issued during the year. And after we account for all of those items, we have a net change in fund balance for the year, which is basically the net income of the city, just over a million dollars. Any questions on those? Okay, that's really all I'm going to dig into the financial statements. Um, there's quite a few notes um after that. So be happy to answer any questions tonight or in the future if you'll have any. And really quickly, I'm, I'm going to move forward to page fifty seven. So um that is our report on internal control and compliance. So as part of our audit, we take a look at internal controls of a financial reporting. Um, and just point out if we see any uh what we call a significant deficiency or material weakness. So a big gap in internal controls that we can bring that to your and management's attention to kind of shore up those items. And we did identify one item that we consider a significant deficiency. Um, so we will um go to page fifty nine and there's details on. And our, the significant deficiency that we identified was just, there were several audit adjustments that we had to post that were. Uh, rather large to get the financial statements uh materially correct. And a lot of those were because you did a bo- bond refunding this year and then the grant revenues. So those aren't things that happen every year. Um, they're kind of out of ordinary because you were between audit firms. Joanna didn't really have anyone to consult with on those items. Um, so her and I worked together on that. Um, and she knows I've worked with her before, but she knows we're more than happy to address those issues when they arise and help her with the proper accounting for those. Rather than coming through in the audit and trying to adjust at that point. So um I don't think we'll see this going forward. And then any questions on them? The last item then that I'm going to cover tonight is um, I think one of the letters that's just going to back through the folder and it's our management letter. On the, I guess, page two of that, um. This goes through some areas that need for improvement and that you don't necessarily rise to the level of. A significant deficiency or material weakness that like needs to be reported in that way. But it's more of like best practices um items. So the first item on there is that adjusting journal entries that we talked about. And then um investment officer training. So um just reminding that someone, the city designated investment officers required to. Complete training every other year. So um and then I think Joanna has a plan to get that done. And then the last three items on there are just some cleanup work that we noticed um in going through the general ledger. Um, that Joanna and I will work on together when we're back out here this summer to do some internal work. Really all I have planned to talk about tonight. If you have any answering questions.
Questions? What's up?
Pretty thorough on it.
All right.
Mayor, I'd like to make one comment. Um, these folks, um although she's worked with us before. And this is no dig at the previous employer, but this is the first year in my fourteen years. That this audit has been provided in accordance with the charter and delivered in March, which is required by the charter. So um we put that in a bid. They randomly get it done and they were the first ones that did. So who goes to you guys? Thank you for that.
Thank you very much. We're moving on to item number two.
Mayor, mayor, are you going to do a motion to accept it?
Right, we have one. Motion by Mr. Pauline, seconded by Mr. Brian Stein, two, three, uh, all four. Any discussion? All those in favor? Janice, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, that's eighty two B. Careful out there. At seven oh seven, I'm hoping to help the hearing on request to consider their ordinance to maybe refresh. Uh, third re-list containing chapter four contains fourteen months late in the zoning ordinance, still on the models. That's my, um, request was made to add more. Home trees to the work treatment. So we've now added all home trees. Our own portions. Um. Have any, any questions? Okay, so it's a seven, we'll go to the public hearing. And and we discussed the center of hospital action, my mentor, three presentations, third, three list containing chapter fourteen aren't late in the zoning ordinance. I'm open. Okay, I have a motion. Okay, I have a motion to accept by Will Ryan Stein, seconded by Angela. Any discussion? All those in favor? Okay. And those, it's uh laughing on.
No, I'm voting. Yeah. Oh, you voted. I'm sorry. I see your own. Did you answer? Sorry, John.
I think my last thought to see you.
That's definitely a hard seat.
Four, discuss the sugar possible action on ordinance declaring unopposed candidates for council member place two, the council member place title, letting to office and canceling the. May sixth, twenty twenty three general election. It's all the way.
Mayor, council, in your package, you found an ordinance that accepts the certification of the unopposed candidates. Can't, we'll be able to cancel this election and during a campus of time, this one to two candidates may take the oath of office.
Thank you. Okay, we have a motion by Angela seconded by Johnny to approve the uh disbanding of. Candidates elected in case of the May sixth election. Any discussion? All those in favor? If you have, thank Johnny. Okay, item number five, discuss the sugar possible action on amendment Joshua personnel policy. It's Brittany.
Hello. So may and council discussed this earlier in our session. The implement whether an emergency closing, long jet being taken, service recognition, holiday leaving, vacation leave, warranty and inclusion.
If that, any questions?
I'm sure you would. It's like that in the next one, but um. For people who do not have, who have, who have not been with the city long enough, so we can explain this to you again. If they do not come to work during the new weather, when they have to use their, they, they. So if the city, if um the city manager decides to close the city, then we are paid. Uh, without using our own, but if we do not close a city facility and someone else, they'll say try it again, they will utilize that one. Yeah, yeah. And I'm going to feature on some, there are some grammar and spelling, guys. Well, never offend me if you make a grammar in a correct way. Well, I, I didn't know it was, you didn't know it was, um, I can give it more simple, but. Using their, or the, or the. Overpower, but um if we use their or we'll keep, we can say even, you know. I just, what you call this for? He and she is correct, because uh he or she or. When you use them swans to employ them, then you have from around in this state. For you. So we have to say that he or she. I don't know. Currently, a lot of people say, poor, because he or she. Well, it's awkward. If you or she.
There was possessive. That's why they used it.
The younger generation will potentially say there, just because they don't. But I hear the documents, they, 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 I'm not a very sure person, but I don't really know. Now, you know, that would be. Are on my side. And it's just bugging me because you know, I.
It's dropping possibilities. I don't know, it's a lot uh, the motions.
The motion makes that be a mental office. Or it's no. Well, I'm not saying.
You have a motion by Shelley seconded by Nora to accept the amendment to the Johnson person, Steve S. Day. With the. All right, any more questions, comments, especially all those in favor? Janice. Yeah, thank you, Brittany. Good.
Definitely not. Thank you.
I mean, look, this is considered a possible action, completely developed and bringing aside by property owners, authorized with city manager to design all necessary documents. How are they?
Mayor City Council, in the staff report list, there's eight different addresses that the property owners have agreed, signed under development agreements. Uh, so is that going to be a prerequisite? Yes. Several, yeah.
Do I have any questions?
I'm moved to approve the development agreement signed by property owners and authorized and city managers sign all necessary.
Motion by Johnny seconded by Shelley to approve the development agreement signed by property owners. And her son.
I have this. We've done it before, but we know that the word is standing on my.
Item number seven, discuss considering possible action. It's all what?
Mayor City Council, uh, this is regarding to planning and zoning board. Um, council member. Let me get my notes here. Here we go. Council member Waldrop has resigned from the planning and zoning. Board, um, alternate one, Jason, has been asked to be appointed for that position. He's attended almost every meeting, um, been very active. So that would leave alternate one open. And then our alternate two, which is Orion Mayhar, has not attended any meetings and is not returning any calls. So I'm asking the council to consider replacing him in that position. Then you'd have two applicants, um, Elizabeth Webb. And a Kathy Sales that has asked to be appointed to those positions.
It's my understanding that they both will last this evening and two to ten.
That's my understanding.
As this is only applicable, so we, we have any other?
These are the only two I've received.
That's recently. Do we have anybody who have applied?
No, sir. This is all I have on hand.
Okay. I will set a motion.
I might have made sense uh. Uh, the first one, the alternate, the alternate, you can end up.
Yes, Jason.
You'll be a permanent member on board, correct?
That's correct. A seat one. Correct. There'll be alternate one and alternate two.
It works. The most from Mr. Brian Stein, move Jason up into place one. Here. Uh, remove the alternate two and replace uh. Him with uh Elizabeth Webb, who was all through his one, Kathy Sales. Do I have a second? Okay, I have a second by Angela. Any discussion? All those in favor? Janice. Okay, we're driving along. Staff reports, if I have any questions on staff reports. Okay. Um. See that uh, our, our wonderful police seat, Ross, thanks for showing well. Would you like to show them that? Now with me in mind.
Honest about puberty, but. One of that. I just wanted to showcase somebody who put in that one previously, just. It was generated off of the bar, this is this academy alumni association, we're able to purchase that. Uh, five bars, I don't get who was calling you firefighter, one of these. Uh, we'll, we'll call it five bar, because that will give you the three firefighters. Uh, but these regions were bridging, um, bridging doorways, uh, breaking windows. Rock and making it really should have been. And then.
For you Chicago fire people, that's slam again.
Uh, we were able to secure the grant, the office of the governor. Um, that grant will put in four and every dollar that we ask for is figured where. These were double four, uh, just will stop right around. Um, in addition to that, we were able to secure the light, um. We will, we will be able to fix last soon as well. And so those white kids just send you these. And then get left to leave, fight, which, and then, so we'll work on uh fixing the lights that we, well, uh, these are, I would carry. North, left and all of them. All of them, all of theirs. Other design to be done. And we have, we're, 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 and we can obviously advance. This is by, by, that's just plastic on there. We often can advance weapons on, and you. Correct, yeah, it's actually, this is, it's like, because that's just plastic. Uh, for shipping, these fringles, if you're on the streets, uh, if you, if you're wearing. We do have now fix some needs, uh, that will open these front cars. We already have two shields, uh, that we, we already have, so we'll be able to add any car. And station should any of us administrative personnel. So there's right, we're not, uh, we've already gone. Uh, that is, we're able to, we believe they shield. Then we offer on, on every Wednesday, until we get everybody free, but they take the shield with them, they take rifle with them, they take their hand. And they go on practice with that team, they're not operating, shield advance. Uh, with the shield, um, this coming uh, somewhere, we did, we're gonna spend uh, hours. Sponsored to provide oxygen, but active shooter. Um, and those things that we hear about, and so that's the thing, they have a breakage, but the shield. Don't wear the plastic, you know, or the body, trying to not carry the shield, move the shield and deploy the shield, uh, same with five bars, and we will have an instructor coming around this chair.
Well, uh, thank you very much to the sisters' force along, uh, having been nice to see you. Purchasing this, this or something that is what we're here for, definitely, so. Anybody else have anything they want to ask about any of these?
No, it's thank our chief, doing outstanding job, I like hearing all that good training, certification, the first class all the way.
And I was giving, if you, if you, that he suffers the training as well, he, um
I've talked about, um, KMO, I was able to, uh, in fact, it was, uh, four months ago. I was able to interact with the K nine officer, uh, through the sheriff's office, and they went to a fatter, uh Tyler, um, on knowing the town county, they were there, their narcotics task force. Uh, they have multiple dogs and also with Fort Worth Police Department, so he's getting more and more training. Uh, we've also been able to secure, it's not a done deal yet. Uh, but we're well on the way to actually securing narcotics from the drug enforcement, they're gonna give us narcotics. Uh, we have to secure, we're buying safe, uh, we have to weigh it, we have to account for and making it, but we'll be able to train with actual narcotics instead of synthetic, if you will. Uh, that will enhance Campbell's ability to uh, to detect narcotics. Um, he is also tomorrow night, uh, going to work with Stop Task Force. They're doing another operation, they did one last week, uh, no, I guess all of it. They're doing another one tomorrow, and KMO will be a part of that, and that's gonna be with Stop Texas Department of Public Safety. I believe the KMO Sheriff's Office will be involved in that one as well. That's gonna be on the western side of it, but it'll be involved in that as well.
You can visit. All right. Uh, so now with all the questions, then, on the staff reports. Hey. Listen, I may not recommend, but by any period, work on a free order, seconding it back and listen all and
Right down there for.
All right. So at uh, this time, we are going to, at seven twenty-five, we are going to resist into the session. Uh, we are uh doing this in accordance with Texas government, section five five one, ten oh seven, so the city attorney lady defending litigation and uh, to generate regard for health equipment evaluation. And some security audit information, so seven twenty-five. Okay, as I saw this, this is back to order. They're going to be taken from the connected session. Does anybody have in the future, again, any sudden request? Uh, I'm not got, I'm not gonna report next month. On how close we are to getting all of our computer issues finally fixed. We, we spent a whole book of money, and we still have an issue that I don't know if you like, yeah. So if you did it with Amber and IT and whatever you need to, with the government, build super figured out. Yeah, I would like that kind of a total cost of what we pay in total, where they, the data, all this stuff. Okay, we might have anything else? Okay, at seven, well, we're here. Eight twelve, excuse me. I was looking at the clock, it's seven.